We're in the meeting.
Hello.
Like to call to order the Thursday, July twenty fifth. Meeting of the City of Manona City Council or Budget Workshop. Quick please call the roll.
Alder Morris?
Here.
Alder Moore?
Here.
Alder Wood? Alder Rodemacher?
Here.
Alder Burstein?
Here.
Alder DeBullo?
Here.
Mayor will come.
Here. I don't think they have any public appearances. Do we? Okay. Um, we're going to move on then to overview and discussion of community survey discussion or survey results. Um, there's going to be have a presentation by Scott Gerard of Community Perceptions, which is the survey company. Um, he's got a PowerPoint. He's going to share with us. So Scott, will you go ahead and?
I need a screen sharing permission, it looks like.
I can make that, or I can put the slides up if you'd like, Scott, whichever is easiest. Let me see if I can get you. Permission here, Scott. Co-host, make co-host, there we go.
I got a, I got a little notification and there we go. All right, just a second here. Good evening, everyone. All right, are you seeing the presentation?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, wonderful. Um, so here we are on July twenty fifth. A little reminder about Community Perceptions. Um, we were founded in two thousand and two and we've helped more than one thousand communities navigate the strategic planning and referendum planning process. This is just a little key for the information you're going to see ahead tonight. Um, so slides with this logo are going to look pretty familiar. Uh, it's mostly information from your survey, background information. We'll go through survey and respondent information. Go through the results and analysis and at the end have time for wrap up and questions. So on to the fun of your survey. Uh, we're just a little over three weeks past the July third survey deadline. We had nine hundred and forty total respondents, which came out to a twenty-three percent response rate. Uh, which is a really strong number. We, our average is in the mid to upper teens. Um, and so getting to nearly a quarter uh of the surveys mailed out being returned is a, is a really good rate to see. Given the number of respondents, we have a three point two six percent margin of error plus or minus. Uh, the age range of your survey respondents, so forty-five percent of the respondents are sixty-five plus. We really like to see a high number there because that is a demographic that votes very reliably. And so it's important to have their voices represented on the survey because they will be represented at the polls uh in November if you choose to pursue a referendum. As you can see, uh, some splits between the other demographics. Is your primary residence in the city? This question is just to ensure uh that we're measuring folks who are going to be able to vote. Um, so ninety-nine percent of respondents uh said yes, so those folks will be able to vote on a potential referendum. This one percent uh might be city staff who live outside the boundaries or perhaps a, a mailer went an address too far or something like that. But uh, the survey is very representative and we're able to disaggregate for just this ninety-nine percent as we get to some of the later slides. Do you own or rent? Eighty-six percent of respondents are owners of their property, fourteen percent are renters. We also asked in which area do you live? Um, and so as you can see, these color-coded areas, twenty-nine percent of respondents and these numbers are rounded. I think one was like twenty-eight point eight and one was twenty-nine point one or something like that, but very, very close. Uh, twenty-nine percent each from green and purple areas and then twenty-one percent each from your orange and yellow areas. Uh, personally, I was really happy to see all of these over twenty percent. Um, I think that shows that you have pretty solid representation from each area of your community. We asked, how do you like to receive city information? Uh, both the city website and emails surpassed the majority of respondents. And then you also had more than two-fifths of your respondents uh who like your newsletters, both electronics and mailed. So on to the referendum question. So first, uh, the base plan was presented to folks, little reminder of what that looked like. And so we asked, would you support a three million dollar referendum to maintain current services? As you can see here, fifty-nine percent of respondents said definitely or probably yes. Thirty percent of respondents said definitely or probably no. So this uh is obviously above that fifty percent needed for approval and outside that three point two six percent margin of error. We did break this down uh geographically since we had the information. Uh, so as you can see, the highest support pockets are in your orange and green areas. And uh, your largest definitely no uh opposition is in the purple area of the city. So then we asked about expanding for some priority staffing positions for four million dollars. And asked, would you support a four million dollar referendum to maintain current services and fund priority staff positions? As you can see, forty-three percent definitely or probably yes, that exact same percentage definitely or probably no. I did want to speak on this slide, given that that's basically a split down the middle to these undecideds. Um, so fourteen percent historically, you know, in, in the mid twenty-ten's, late twenty-ten's, we were seeing about a third of undecided folks break to yes on, on average. Um, that was pretty common and so we would put that in some calculations. What we have seen in the past two-ish years uh is that only at most about a tenth of these folks are breaking to the yes side. And now that can obviously, you know, be a little different here and there in communities based on yes or no campaigns that come out, other factors. But for the most part, uh, these folks will end up moving toward the no camp more likely than the yes camp. Um, just based on the research we've been doing. We did again break it down by areas of the city. As you can see, the orange area remains uh your highest area for support. Well, the purple area remains your highest level of definite opposition. We did ask about further expanding to a four point three million dollar referendum. And here you can see thirty-two percent said definitely or probably yes, and a majority fifty-two percent of respondents said definitely or probably no for that four point three million dollar ask. Again, geographical breakdown. Um. Once again, orange is the highest uh area for support and once again, purple is the highest area for opposition. We also asked on a scale of zero to ten, how likely would you be to recommend living in our community to a friend or family member? Uh, Manona average was seven point eight five. We really, when we're looking at these slides, the first place we look are these top three numbers, this green. Those folks, research has found are pretty uh really excited to live there and will be out there talking about the value of living in your community, uh, sometimes even unprompted. And so what you can see here is we get to almost fifty percent just between these top two. And then you add that and that eighteen percent and you're at two-thirds of respondents are in those top three zones. That's a really strong response, um, and a really good place uh to be starting these conversations with your community from. So a little recap, uh, in summary, the base plan had fifty-nine percent support. The expand plan had forty-three percent support and the further expand plan had thirty-two percent support. And that is the end of the presentation that I had prepared, but I'm happy to take questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Sure.
Do you know in the communities, in terms of the, how the undecideds have moved, have those communities done new education campaigns after the survey?
Certainly there are, yeah, and, and to vary, you know, there's varied levels of those communications campaigns. But a lot of the communities uh we survey do some education, voter education after a survey, yeah.
Anyone else have questions?
Mayor, I do.
Nancy?
Yeah, um. So. One of the things that I was asked by several constituents is uh, or, or I should say, one of the things that was shared by several constituents was that it was difficult to make a choice in the survey, um, because they were not given any of the ramifications, like if they, for yes or no. I mean, uh, for instance, if they said no to any one of the three, but it's, but certainly even the first one, you know, um, or, or the second one, you know, what kind of services would be cut, right? Um. In other words, they were wanting the education upfront uh, because they felt like the, they were operating in somewhat of a vacuum. Um, and can you just respond to that from your depth of experience and why you choose to do the education after? Rather than before?
Well, so I know uh you all have been working with Mueller Communications and there wasn't a more in-depth options document, I believe. Um, that's out there and, and what we have found is uh in some of our research about um, survey responses is every hundred words you add, you lose a percent of response rate, which makes the data less reliable. Um, we've also been doing some, uh, seen some research recently um that folks on average read about four hundred words a minute, somewhere in there. Um. I might be wrong on that number, but uh every four minutes, folks like to check their phones on average. Again, that's not every person, but what happens when they do that is you lose their attention and their focus and they may not come back. And so it really is a careful balance of what information they need to know versus making sure we're getting a, a solid response rate. Um, and, and folks aren't tuning out and you're not getting any feedback. And so we, we do our best to strike that balance and then, you know, there are opportunities hopefully for folks to reach out with questions or get more information on the city website if they are interested in further research.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Brian?
Um. From your experience, have you, how much from the no category or neutral category has been able to move to the yes category from educational campaigns after the survey into a vote? On average?
It's, it's hard to give an exact average. I would say if, if you answered no on the survey, it's likely going to stay a no. I don't think we see much movement out of that group. Um, and that undecided, again, on average lately, we've been seeing about a tenth of those undecideds move to yes. Again, there, there are also factors outside of your control that can really impact that likelihood. Uh, if a no group forms or a yes group forms, you know, either side of that could add, add a couple percentage points perhaps. Um, but i- it's not a huge group that's shifting generally, I would say.
Doug?
Just, I had a question on the methodology, but you know, more familiar with small, smaller sample sizes, but scientifically randomly selected. And these responses were, were, uh, you know, self-selected. So is it just because you have that volume of that percentage of responses that you can set confidence in the, you know, that you're, that there's a three and a half percent margin of error?
Yeah, so the three and a half percent margin of error is just based on the number of respondents. Um, statistically, what we have found is once the response rate for the number of surveys we sent out is above ten percent. Um, we've historically been around ninety-four percent accurate in our predictions um of passage or failure.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Staff, do you have any questions? It's a council meeting, but. Um, well, I guess if we don't have any questions.
Yeah, I think that was good. Appreciate it, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Be coming to the council meeting, or be assumed, right, on the fifth?
If, yeah, we, we said if there was their questions, I think we're going to arrange to have him be available virtually.
Yeah, yeah, so if you have anything.
Certainly, yeah, it comes up before that, certainly please let staff know and we'll get an answer.
They know how to reach me.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. We've got Scott pretty regularly in this process.
Not bugging when it's, when it's good questions, though.
Okay. Well, if no one has any other questions, we can keep the PowerPoint up or you have, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
Bye.
Check anything else we have.
Yeah, if there's.
So, so we've got a twenty-three percent response rate.
Mm-hmm.
And Scott just said that historically, with all the work that they do, once they get above a ten percent response rate, they've been pretty spot on at predicting how this is going to go. So how is it going to go? If we were to ask the question today, option one would pass, but two and three would fail.
Mm-hmm.
And we are planning community education. Um. But we're not going to get another prediction from this service after community education has been done, which kind of speaks to what Alder Moore was saying. So it's, yeah, it's hard to know.
We will, it'll be called the referendum.
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah, that's my point, exactly.
Right, right, right.
Sorry.
Right, right, right.
And we did speak with, with, with Miller Communications as well, as all these results stated, obviously tracking this with this as we go. Uh, I think he had gave us like a, a ninety-nine, she said a ninety-nine percent uh chance that that's, that's how it's going to go.
Yeah.
I mean, in terms of, you know, also keeping in mind that certainly we're not in an advocacy position related to the referendum, we can only provide information.
Right.
So it does make it, uh, it, it does, for that makes it a little bit even more difficult, I think, in that, but, but I think if my understanding from that, we'll certainly be able to get something more direct from them was that that there was, there was, I think it would be safe to say there was significant risk of failure if you, if you pursued options two or three.
Yeah. And this, I know that a lot of, a lot of school systems in particular have used these, well, Manona's used them, yeah, we've gotten them, you know.
That's what you want to see, Alder.
Option two, the results, are they results?
Twenty-three, forty-three, right?
Yeah.
Break down the middle with the undecideds breaking to no.
This one here.
Yeah.
We get to share it up here.
With the largest chunk.
Hold on, Nancy, you want to share this so you can see it too?
No problem.
And it's a three and a half percent margin of error?
Yeah. Yeah.
So it could be about forty-five.
That's also about forty.
Forty-one.
Yeah.
It could be, yeah, well, in this case, could be forty-five, forty-one, yes, with forty-five, forty-one, no, right?
Yeah.
Approximately.
And it was interesting that he said years ago, undecided folks tended to break onto the yes side.
No, thirty, but a third.
A third of undecided votes were yes, but now they go no.
So they've seen, they said they've seen that that trend has reversed.
Yeah. What do you guys make up the four geographic regions?
Hmm, it was interesting.
Do we have demographics for the, those regions though? Because I'm just curious how that plays into. Well, I bet they, they probably could cross-reference that if we ask them to.
Yeah.
Because I'm going to assume in that area where the current and all that is, that's generally skews younger.
Yeah.
I'm going to guess.
But that's also includes everything over on Shadow Lane.
Yeah.
Right, condos and, and there's some roses.
Yeah, there's houses too.
Where's the senior housing?
It's in both purple and orange.
Oh.
Right on the border, there's.
Well, there's senior housing in both.
Right.
I'd be curious. And in orange.
Okay. And I'd also be curious to know a level of participation from all those new apartments too, in the circle.
We had.
Well, they said fourteen percent were renters. Now, there's quite a few homes
Yeah.
that can be rented.
We did get a, a lot, a significant number of, of returned surveys from apartments. For somebody, it was, it was a situation with the post office or exactly what, what was there, so.
You mean returned is undeliverable?
Yeah, either vacant or, or some guy, we need to get a significant number of adults who have heard down this.
Oh, sure.
But a lot of them came from seniors too, so they would have made battles and lawsuits. They brought their, to survey down there and bring them up to at least a lot of calls that happened. But if anything else might be a little underrepresented in terms of actual voters coming to the polls, but that would be assumption.
Yes, yeah, that's true, yeah.
Well, I'm happy that a decent percentage supported something.
Yeah, no, that was, I mean, and then pretty early on in terms of the response rate. And I think it is, it is notable that there, they did see such a strong participation from, I think, sixty-five and over population. So I think that, that, I agree with Scott, that definitely gives a, a degree of validity that we don't have to worry about there's a, you know, potential negative bounce on, on what those numbers.
Did I miss, do we know the numbers based on the age demographics too?
That's one of the slides.
Slides, right? Just curious to see like different, you know.
Or not reach to the three.
Not reaching three, that's what I'm curious about, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're basically wanting to overlap with aged, with locations and with.
Because I have a, I have a vision of one area maybe skewing older, but I'm just curious.
Yes. I'm, I'm guessing they could certainly cross-reference that with a lot of but it wouldn't change the results also.
No, no, no.
I mean, I think
I like the data.
It, to me, the important thing is that people support the compensation.
Yep. No, we talked early on, that was.
Which is our priority.
Yes.
Right?
Calling, calling Anna, but I would just add that, um. Being the optimist, um, that I always try to be, uh, and I usually am, um. I, I think that it speaks to two things. One is, is that people in Manona appreciate the high quality of the services um, that are provided to them. Um, uh, and and perhaps even more significantly, that people in Manona uh, fully appreciate um and support the high quality of the staff we're also fortunate to have. They don't want to see either one of those things go away. They may not, they may not be comfortable adding to it, but they don't want to see either one of those things go away. And that's the way we all feel too, what we said from the very beginning, right?
Neil, could you go to the slide that shows what's covered in each, the first two options, the three? The three, three, option one, what's the three?
Yeah, we'll see here.
And did you, I asked you guys to put together a little list of what's included besides the compensation?
We have the original budget worksheet that had we did from everybody else that goes down to option one, option two and option three essentially. So these are the list of, I think maybe your question was maybe on the general operating costs.
Yeah, so that's like a ten percent increase. That's something we've limited to zero, one percent of the last forty years.
Correct, yeah, so that's helpful.
That's an option one.
Yes.
Yes.
So that is covered in every single one of these, um, and the compensations in all three options.
The wage adjustments, the longevity adjustments, which.
If I can get this on here, hold on, Alder, and share. Spreadsheet, here we go. Alright, so this was again, this is just, this was the original worksheet. This is also the worksheet that went out to department heads for budget constructions as well. So. So looking compensation plan, other personnel-related costs we had identified in there, you know, non-personnel related costs. So another way so I can.
Can you email that?
Yeah, absolutely. You should hopefully have gotten this one already, but yeah, I think it absolutely will send it back out again, absolutely.
This was a cruel.
Yeah, yeah. So certainly the non-personal costs, you know, this, the general operating, but also includes the assessment contract. Moving some of our capital items back to operating as we were directed, I think by our auditor, if I was correct on that part. Yeah, and then, uh, you know, some training costs. And then this, just additional, you know, some maintenance costs up there.
And then the contracted.
Then there was the contracted garbage services and then increasing IT expenses that we've got. So those are all the items that go into the cost to continue.
That's really going to make a huge difference.
Yeah, so, so even that option, even at the, even at the, the cost to continue option does have some built-in improvements and increases to help with costs.
What was the bonus and option B?
That was the decision.
Yeah.
What are they, could you just, an extra bonus or?
Yeah, that we actually had in the, here we go. So I think we actually had that in the, sorry, staff, here we go. So.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, so traffic enforcement officer and promotional supervisor, firefighter paramedic, two park staff, and then the communications and sustainability and.
I thought that was an option three.
No, the option three included still additional staff.
Yeah, council, yeah, council actually voted to move these positions up.
Yeah, it's raised to three, but that's where we put them in originally.
And then just for reference, Alder?
I got it.
So what was our last one here? Then again, we had dispatch supervisor, party for recreation and then the two liver.
Well, we were, we were talking about a wheel tax. What, uh, what amount were we looking at?
We, it just depends. Mark, what's the?
And, and we had a number we were talking about, just like seventy thousand per ten dollars.
Okay.
So it's forty dollars.
Gotcha.
Just a, that's what I made, what the wheel tax is. Right, just.
Yeah, just, just thinking about some of those priority positions and how to fund them.
I don't, we can't, this is all we can ask.
Yeah, I know, I know, yeah.
But I've got some ideas about some of the priority positions. For instance, I've talked to President Sandamiano is willing to just take over, hire private people to do the maintenance of Sandamiano, mowing, that kind of thing, that'll make some of the stress-off Jake's people.
Well, they're paying, they're still paying.
They're paying for it, yeah.
That'll free up our staff for another item. Yeah.
You know, I don't, they're, you know, maybe there's a few other, I don't think we can cover all those positions, but maybe there's.
Yeah.
Sure.
I would like to do something about the fire department. I mean, I really think the tenth person would be, would help a lot with all of the.
Well, that and, that and I really feel pretty strongly about traffic officer.
Yeah.
You know.
We could get so.
I mean, we can make an argument for all of us.
Right.
Obviously, but the two, the two most important to me and probably everyone, I'm not, I'm going to speak earlier, the fire department.
And just to be clear, obviously, whatever direction we're set, we're setting the direction of the number. And we're basing that number on very specific scenarios. And what, absolutely presented a survey out to the community on this is what we're basing those scenarios on. So if we change those, we just need to be very careful with that.
Well, yeah.
Because that can very much, very, very much alter and impact the approval rate.
If we change those, that's going to affect compensation and we don't want to do that, so.
Well, we're not stuck, we don't have to go with those, you know, the three million, four million, I mean, we could, we could do three, three and a half. We could do, yes, right, we could say, okay, we can't do all these positions, we're going to do some of them, we could.
So then ask for more than we said we're going to ask for, that they voted for, you mean?
No, to add, so that the amount that we would ask for in the referendum would be more than three, but less so more than option one, but less than option two.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, we know that fifty-nine percent will support option one, but we don't know that they'll support.
Will they, will they support option one point five?
And they raised that in our conversations with Miller, Alder, so and they, they, they I'll put it, they strongly recommended against that. They said in terms of if you have an approval at a certain level, you know, to try to change that.
Since option two was like a bait and switch.
Yeah.
But option two was that dead even forty-three percent on either side without any sort of public awareness campaign.
Yeah. I think we need to keep in mind too, that we're going to be closing some, we're going to be getting in some more increment, you know, some of these projects are going to be completed within the next year or two, so we're going to be able to increase taxes a little bit more, so. I don't think we can say we're never going to be able, if we have the money to cover the operating for the next few years, which is what
Yeah.
the plan is, then hopefully, we'll have some of, you know, we'll be able to do some increases based on the net new construction number to cover.
Well, certainly, some of those numbers do get to the point where they are attempting to do that. Well, certainly, some of those numbers do get to the point where they are attempting to do that, understanding the risk is. Improved referendum or zero.
Yeah.
There is, there is no, there is no fallback position. We say, okay, two didn't go, or never mind, we just wanna go back to one.
Yeah.
We, we can't, unfortunately, we can't do that.
We could, the next time there's an election, I mean, we, we'd have to.
We could, that's right, yeah.
At some point, but I don't think.
I, my understanding is you wouldn't be too, but keep in mind though, you still would be under the current budget here and the assessment isn't, it's what's it. Actual levy hadn't been established for the entire year. So even if you've got it passed in the spring, you're not seeing that, you're realizing that.
We also have issues with public safety building.
Right, right. I just feel like though with fifty nine percent. I think we're leaving money on the table that we could, that we could approve if we asked for more than three million. I don't know what that number is or how close we wanna, you know. Do that, but.
Without a survey.
I can, I can only speak for myself, but I would definitely not. Be comfortable going over the three million.
Me either.
I think we have to learn, I mean, we have to learn from our experts and our experts, experts have said. That the needle doesn't move with much with the education, if at all, ten percent at the most, uh, and um. And I, 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 I just think we can't risk uh for. A hundred thousand dollars more or a single position or two hundred thousand dollars more to positions. I don't think we can risk losing the whole thing. I, I, I just don't. I think it's very cut and dry. What's available to us and we need to figure out other ways. If we're gonna fund those other positions, we need to find other ways to fund those positions, including net new construction. Um, and the TIFs and other things that Mary was just talking about. That, that's my sense.
I guess I, well, we're gonna talk about this a couple more times, right? So, but. You know, like, it, it's basically a tie at four million and it's like it's, let's get in the margin is like. At option one is fifty nine to thirty two or something. What was it? Do you know? Option two.
Option two was a tie.
Basically a tie.
Right, but it's still seven percent below fifty percent.
Right.
Well, okay, but it's. So, and option one was fifty nine. There's gotta be, like, you could, I assume you could probably at least estimate, you know, sort of grab. I don't know if it's a straight line or not, or, you know, but. That the support, the more, the more you spend, more the support's gonna go down, but you got, I mean, it's fifty nine to, is it thirty two, forty, no, thirty two.
And the first, first one.
Yeah. Fifty nine to thirty. Even if all and decided to go negative, it's fifty nine to forty one. I don't know, I think it's the least we're talking about, and I don't see the bait and switch argument at all, cause I didn't think when we approved those numbers to put. In the survey that we were saying. You know, that we are definitely gonna do one of these three, that we're not gonna do.
If I was a resident, I think I would assume that I was doing one of the three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sir, the residents, that, the resident perception, we. Uh, we have our thoughts, but there will be, we know that there will be some sort of.
I don't know, I would, I would say with all, not this one, I don't, I don't.
I don't think they're gonna remember whether we said three or three point two, or that that's gonna be when they go to.
I, I guess. I respectfully disagree with that one all, based on the comments and questions.
We didn't say that was the numbers that we were definitely going to use.
You've done this, this budget exercise, which we based on those three numbers consistently, from those volumes. And we've done a survey on those three scenarios, and I think to come in now. I, I would have to agree with the consultant, and I think it's, it's a, it's a significant risk to do that. And while it seems like that percentage is a large number. I think that can erode and erase pretty fast.
Did you imagine?
If it's, if it, if it becomes a trust issue, if we're gonna basically getting a referendum on a trust issue versus. The financial need in the city, I think that, that could not, that could go poorly for us.
And I don't know if people were voting based on that number as much as good, better, best. And they just chose the least.
I think if you read the comments, you'll see they were voting on the number and it was, this is how it's affecting my taxes.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I still think it was relative based on the options they had.
I think it's a really big risk to take.
Oh, yes, no, that's my point, yeah.
I, I could say something like this, not passing by like twenty votes, you know, because of distrust. And how many times we hear about transparency, whether it's more.
Right.
You know?
And I think there, there are, I don't think all of these positions are necessarily have to have next year. Um, I think there's gonna be some additional money that we can use to fund some positions, you know, two or three years or whatever. Maybe the legislature will, you know, change how we have to figure this out. I mean, we don't know. There's some, maybe we'll get more shared revenue, who knows? I mean, I think.
It would be helpful, I think, to know, Mark, what, does some of these bigger developments come online, like what is, how much? You know, is that gonna mean the future budgets?
You know, basically by next, in the next year, it'll likely be at two million. Employees value is so, and then you charge them. To get one percent. Still have to get some big numbers. Now, at the current rate, it'd go and be fifty thousand, fifty, fifty five thousand, and with the current budget. So even. I don't think these projects. Forty to sixty million. Because you're, you're tearing stuff down.
You're having the bloom and base up.
Yeah, so you have to tear down, you have to rebuild, you're having split gears, which is part of the problem.
Yeah, but looking out, say, you know, three years.
Yeah, you might have a couple of years.
Because what's your, we have some other things.
Yeah. So you're probably gonna. You know, one sixty million, so two or three percent. And, and what percentage of voters was this? You know, one, three, twenty three percent, you know, so.
And they aim for. Into the high teens.
Well, that's, that's their usual response.
Yeah, the usual response, right? And anything above ten.
Anything over ten percent in a survey is considered good, so the twenty three percent is, is a good number.
I think we run a real risk of not getting this done.
Yeah.
If we modify now.
I mean, I'm not trying to be wishy washy, I agree with that, but I also agree with Doug that I don't think it would be perceived as a bait and switch. At, at the end of the day, we shouldn't risk getting it done.
We'll be sharing comments.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, sure.
You guys may wanna. Again, while we can't, those, that's not a tabulation, obviously, all those comments are, people are already counting in the statistical.
Yeah.
Tabulation of the survey, but we'll give some perception on whether or not it would be viewed positively or negatively.
Are those comments paired with a yes or no?
In the majority of times, it's pretty clear where their stance is, and they, they are broken out by, um, I think actually by. Comments section, so option one, option two, option three, there was section comments for option one.
Are duplicated, I think, yeah.
So I think some of them did, I think they actually did.
But, yeah. They didn't, the comment doesn't necessarily say that they were a, a no for.
I think they were probably more likely to be no. No, it's the yes, it's just.
I mean, I think somewhat. Some of the discussion here is if extremely negative comments. Our rate knows, education to campaign is not gonna change, like, nothing's gonna change that perception, so even if it's a very. Scathing comment section.
It's still just a no, right.
I'm just saying in terms of what people are thinking about transparency and things, so, you know. They're probably still gonna be a no, but they're out there saying, well, see, told you they were transparent, they said this was gonna be.
I don't see how it's not transparent, but a new number and say, this is the number that we're asking for.
Because they gave us their advice based on a different.
And we're taking their advice, including, we asked.
But we know.
We asked you three things.
I think we're putting a different number.
I think there's a difference between, between the definition of transparency and the perception of transparency. And the perception of transparency is something that we hear about often, and it's from. Folks that. Don't want us to spend money, that think that we spend money without direction. Uh, and no amount of education, at least in my experience so far, with trying to explain how the budget's done to some of the folks that are. Diometrically opposed, changes their mind.
Are these, are these folks just a few loud clanky wheels, or are they actually folks whose opinions we truly respect and they're educated?
There were fourteen hundred comments.
To that nature.
Well, a lot of them, I'd think more negative people, no, not just transparency, but I'm just saying.
Wait, they're how many?
They start talking and.
More comments than.
How many responses do we get? We got like nine hundred.
Well, some of.
But you can comment on each question, but, yeah, yeah.
I just, to me, I guess we can have different ideas about.
Yeah, I think.
Whether that's okay or not.
Even without the number, I think there is a perception of like, keep things the same.
Yep.
And like, yes, we wanna compensate people fairly, things like that. I think there's a perception of. They may or may not associate that with a number. And then there's the second of like, yeah, keep everything the same, but also add some things. And I think that's where some people are probably shifting of like, but no, like, that's not good with the services we have.
Yeah.
They're not listening to us.
There are a lot of comments about how we don't need these extra positions.
Yeah.
There was a couple that said, well, to fund the police too. Like, I wanted to explain what we, did we already do that? Basically, I mean, not by choice.
I would just say again too that. You know, we hired. My understanding is we hired the best in the state. Uh. Folks that have done many referendums. And have a good track record of doing those referendums. They know their stuff and they are, as Neil said, advising that we not. Go beyond what we have the numbers for.
Well, I'd like to hear them, hear them, and, and we didn't ask, ask that specifically, so I think when we see them again, I'll ask that. Like, you know, if we go to three point two, is that really, like, all of a sudden we're gonna lose nine percentage points?
All against pass along all of what, what our consultants told us, and they were very clear, and they said they did not recommend. Pursuing numbers higher than what we have put in our survey.
Right.
And we can certainly email him in the meantime to get the answer to that question. I mean, you could email him and. Mine copy, I'm gonna copy everybody and whatever, send the response to everybody, one copy.
But I still feel as leaders. There is. We should do what we say we're gonna do, and I think that this whole process. Kind of illustrates three options that we said that we're going to do, and if we change one of them, well, then we're not doing what we said. Or at least that could be the perception.
We said we're gonna do either a base, a base plus or a base plus plus, so to say we're gonna do base and a little bit more. It's not. That is in no way misleading or us, you know.
But you're talking about positions.
Yes.
You're changing, Doug, you're changing from what we originally said. We voted for council. That in option number two was when we were adding positions. We agreed that we were not gonna add positions unless we went to option number two. If the positions were. The positions were absolutely critical, we would have put the positions in option number one. And we didn't, we voted to put them in option number two, and the votes aren't there for option number two.
I mean, I thought we did that more as. Way to categorize them as, you know, cost to continue plus, you know, maintenance, basically cost to continue. And then. That we didn't put any new positions in that because that's what we wanted that one category to be only that, and so.
I think it's because we said option one is our priority.
Right.
The compensation is our employment priority, we didn't say the positions were.
I agree, and it is.
And I, I don't disagree, I don't disagree with you, Doug, oh, I understand exactly where you're coming from, I just feel that if we do that, that. Not everyone else will feel the same.
Doesn't risk the. The opposite of a strong no campaign. With maybe misperceptions about what it is that we might be attempting.
Yep.
And I think that's some of the fear that you might be hearing from folks of like, does it risk bringing people out in a strong no? And saying things that might not necessarily represent the complete truth.
Yeah, we've experienced that before.
Take over that one, actually, you'll see, you'll see a significant amount of that. In the comments that are provided from the survey.
Yeah, could we, could we, you know, find out from the school district, if, cause they've done these surveys in the past, find out. Sort of what their.
They've ever done a middle ground.
Or what their results were versus, you know, I mean. Yeah, basically, I assume they did, you know. They did different scenarios and what were the numbers and how did they decide? Like, we know what they decided then did to ask for.
Well, what did Katie say to you about that?
Yeah, I talked to her a couple times.
Katie's the communications person at the school.
So they would do three representations. They did by themselves, they only used uh, school perceptions, which is the same company as community perception for the survey. But they did all the referendum information and education themselves. Her feedback to me was, we strongly. Should sit right, we went with exactly what the survey said for our questions because. Of that reason, we didn't wanna have them give feedback on something. And then for a question and that wasn't what we were asking in the survey. And we, then it was kind of, she said that, it was kind of like, why were we asking their opinion if we wanted to take it?
Sure, that's a good way to put it.
And so it's also like branding, you know, like, this is what we're doing, this is what we're doing, this, well, wait a second, no, we're gonna do this, but we're gonna do this, you know, that's a way, now I'm confused.
So that was her exception, I mean, Phil, I wouldn't, I bet she would love to talk about it, so. She's a resident, obviously, so.
You can, I suppose we can, we can come to the council meeting and. Talk about their experience.
Right, that's. I, I like the way that was explained, Will, like, why were you asking us if you weren't going to?
I think there might be a difference too if, for example, don't do this now, Mark. If Mark came back to us and said, seeing on that spreadsheet. I've got new information coming down the pipeline of something that's happening at the state, and actually cost of continuing. Is different than what we thought it was, and now actually the cost of continuing is three point two. I think that might be something different.
Sure.
Um, I guess I had a totally different conception of the whole process, that I thought we were trying to figure out. How, what the, ultimately the size of the referendum was gonna be. I didn't realize that when we voted earlier that that was, that we were locking in. One of those three numbers.
To be clear, Alder, you, you, this body has the ability to set that number wherever you would like to set it.
I am.
When I say the consultant is recommending no, and I think staff is recommending that, that's, we should stick with the number that we surveyed. I, you absolutely have the ability to do that.
Nancy?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I, I wanna be clear that. It's not that I don't understand the need, it's not that I, I don't think that it's, I mean, I think we all understand the need for additional positions. We wouldn't have been talking about them and put them in option number two and in option number three if we didn't understand that. Um, so I, I, so I don't, I don't want my comment to be misconstrued as, you know, I, so what, we don't have new positions. It, it is, it, it matters, and I think we need to find another way to fund them. Um, uh, and I, and I mean, you know, without putting it on the backs of the taxpayers, um, per se. Um, but I, again, I, I think that we would be remiss. Uh, I don't think we can afford to miss on this, and I just wanna remind everybody again. That we have a public safety building coming up. And, um, and the last thing we wanna do is put ourselves in a position where, again. And um, and the last thing we wanna do is put ourselves in a position where, again, our community. Feels like they can't trust us or we're not being transparent, and on the heels of that, oh, by the way, we're gonna ask for some more for this other thing. I I it just doesn't sit what what so, sit well with me, and so it's not that I'm giving up on the staff positions. But I don't think we can fund them through the referendum.
Yeah. It is important to play the long game. And think about that public safety building.
And the fact that we may have some additional money.
Sure.
From various other things that we can use for some of these positions.
Yep. Yeah.
Well, I guess we're sort of on. Question, number, item five, which was consideration and possible action on directing staff to prepare a referendum question. For formal consideration by the city council. Now, we have to have this approved by the second meeting in August in order to. Put it on the ballot. So we need to have something for the fifth, um, can staff. And there's specific statutory language that we have to follow. In fact, this is the Department of Revenue, get involved in writing the question. Right, so we need to know. At least a number to start with. Now to consider on on the fifth, and, you know, if you decide you wanted to change it, then you could change. Could change the number. I I wouldn't think that would affect the rest of the question.
There was a couple of others, a lot of numbers, percentage increases, we need to reference in the question, but I think if you're along, that's two.
You have two questions prepared.
Two, two questions?
I mean, if you're gonna, because it'd be harder to go back to D R if you. We need somebody else approved by them.
Yeah, I think you'd have to write both of them, pick one, two, you can't.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Uh, if you're gonna want other stuff on it, I think you would want to do our.
Are they gonna do that before the fifth?
We'll have to contact.
Are we, are we locked into paying the other communications for public uh, education? Because if we already know, if we already know that option one is gonna pass. And if we already know that.
No, we can't just, we've gotta do some analysis about it.
I know we do, but it did occur to me, based on what the survey guy is telling us. But of course, he didn't say, well, if you don't do an education thing, what would happen?
I mean, that fifteen percent voted without any education.
Right.
Yeah.
But.
Try to save it money.
Yeah, I think it was.
And it's also fifteen, I'd probably twenty percent.
Right.
Seven, maybe, is it? Yeah, it was around.
Or thirty-one, I can't, we signed it.
Yeah.
Didn't, didn't. Also say that that the education doesn't sway. I don't think, okay, alright.
I I would argue that the education is absolutely critical. It's not about whether or not the, no, it. In my view, it's not about whether the number changes, it's about bringing our community along and being transparent. And uh, helping people understand. You know, where that number is coming from in a, in a greater depth, and that's absolutely critical. I mean, to say that the communication isn't important because we'll probably get the vote anyway, just doesn't make, or education or communication, it doesn't make any sense to me. It's worth every penny in my book.
I agree with you, Nancy.
Yeah.
Just putting it out there for conversation.
I would say in terms of, I think, certainly, at the very least, when you read through the comments, it's very clear. Some topics that we need to do some public education on, in terms of just sharing information. Sandamiano is probably objective number one in terms of people really understanding how we're paying for that.
Yeah.
What is the actual impact on the tax bill, how it's actually being maintained, how what the, there is, there is a lot of.
And another big one is how your assessment affects the amount of taxes.
Right, everybody says, well, my taxes went up thirty percent. No, my assessment might have went up thirty percent, but your tax bill.
They just assume that their taxes, with it, they don't realize that their assessment. What relates to the proportion of the tax they pay.
But that's been true for.
Well, it's, but it's a big question now, we're asking them to, you know.
Yeah, I hadn't, I was thinking earlier today, you know how police departments around the the county, the country, whatever, do a citizens boot camp, right? Citizens Police Academy. I honestly feel like I I would love to figure out a way we can do. Not kidding, I really think that that would be.
Yeah.
Great idea. Brian and I actually talked about doing something like that a few years ago.
With the City Hall Academy.
Yep.
Yeah.
Let people know how this works.
Because it's, boy, just looking at the comments, and we're sharing this after the meeting, I mean, it's very obvious a lot of people don't know how. And they talk about, why don't we sell nickel school, reach it all?
Yeah, that's silly.
And I learned that I haven't had any increase in my property taxes in ten years.
You personally have any first interest there?
And I'm a dictator. Yeah, I mean. So, you know, we, yeah, there's a lot of educating we need to take together. It's kind of a finding out between how much you wanna go into things and that, but.
Well, so.
Would it help us to be able to at least give you direction for at least one of the questions to?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think as we would like, just because of the timing, we would like to probably, at a minimum, get going on.
It sounds like maybe there'll be some offline questions that might then spur a second question.
Will's got a question.
Oh, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, well, based on communication and education moving forward, based on what Miller Miller has already given us. What we'll be sending out tomorrow for all the residents on the website and the press release is saying. Survey results indicate that a clear majority of respondents at fifty-nine percent would support a three million dollar referendum. So we're, we're gonna put that out there to everyone and tell them that's what they supported. Uh, and that will be on the website, on the news release.
And we're putting this report out too, which also says that.
Exactly.
Just, would it be, I mean, a three million dollar referent, I E, option number one? I mean, if we spent a lot of time tonight talking about how people saw three options. And therefore, we have to keep very clear that we are honoring one of those three and not a hybrid. So like three million, I E, or in parentheses, whatever it was.
As pride in in option one.
Exactly, exactly, you know, just to be very clear that. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
That we're not just pulling that three million out of the air.
But we're putting several.
Right, this will be certainly just the first time we can, again, all this information will be out publicly available for people to read.
Press release about.
This one, we've had the press release, let us know that this information is available. And obviously, there's, you know, we'll be, you know, we'll be starting the, you know, some of the public education responding, so we know some of the things we need to get on. Regardless of what the question ends up being, uh, there's some things we need to get out there and and get some, some information out there, so folks. Even if, even as you as always, get questions in the community and be able to be like, actually, we've prepared that. So.
So I'm preparing to make the motion that we direct staff to work with the Department of Revenue to formulate a question for the upcoming referendum. At option one and the three million dollar mark.
I'll second.
Any further discussion about that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Thank you.
If you wanna, if people have questions.
Who's joining here, okay?
If people have questions for Scott, why don't you send them to Neil and. Send them and then share them with everyone. Oh, no, you're, oh, that's your, okay, sorry. And then we'll share the answers with everybody. Nancy?
Sorry, I just wanna get clarity around um, the communication to our constituents public. Uh, tomorrow that Will was just talking about, we're, we're putting this entire slide deck on the website.
Yes.
Yeah.
And will, so people can see the full results of the survey.
Yes, good.
And we're, uh, and I'm assuming in the e-news will have a link to that slide deck or something. So that, again, if people wanna see the results, they can see the results of the full survey.
Yep, absolutely, Aldo. We're gonna be using basically the um, place, mymanora.com slash referendum. As our kind of the the base root page where we've been sharing information already. We're gonna try to keep using that page because it's the shortened URL. Keep it so it's easy to copy and paste and forward and share it wherever. That would be exactly what we would wanna share in both anything online and in the newsletter.
Okay, and then there's obviously gonna be PSAs on WVMO, and we're gonna be.
Yep, absolutely.
You'll be getting it out via Manona Lowdown, et cetera, so.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Where were you gonna send the comments to us?
They'll be right, every, in the next five minutes after we get out here.
And there are tabs along the bottom, which I didn't, I, for some reason, never look at the tabs in spreadsheets, but.
Based on, based on each of the comments for each of the survey questions, they took the comments from that particular question, and there are some repetitive ones. I think folks just, in normal cases, put the same comment in both.
It's definitely more in some than others, so.
How much was digital versus paper?
How much was digital?
Well, we have, the folks could do both.
No, but I'm just wondering when the survey came in, how many, how many were digital or?
Oh, how many were, I don't know if we asked them that, I think it went to, we had.
There weren't too many paper, were there, like thirty maybe or forty? Leah, do you remember? How many papers?
Thirty or forty, sixty or so.
Or even more digital, because they, we had, we had preliminary results from them fairly quickly, and they were obviously, as soon as the deadline was done. They were able to give us a preliminary tabulation of how many were there. Yeah.
Interesting.
Okay.
But the paper surveys could also just be sent directly to.
That's true.
The tabulator, so we got like a sixty here, but we don't know how many went right there. Because that's where they return at the low one.
Oh, got it.
Okay.
That would be an interesting point to understand, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Alright, did you wanna do something about a second question, or, or do you wanna wait till this week and get some answers from?
Right now, I don't really have a number. I mean, I could just, I'd have to be, you know, pulling a number out of the air, so.
Okay, well, I guess why don't you. Let Mark know or whatever, if you do have something.
I mean, this is just for D N R to.
Based on that new construction number gets put in there, there's. So they just.
So this. So you just said, isn't it just like, isn't, there's just blanks?
Well, they have to get, for some reason, the net construction number is included in there.
Yeah.
So that's the.
That's right.
But there's, there is some math that will.
They do have approved the question that in its form by before we, the first read. Alright.
I mean, we, yes, I think, I think we might be required, but yeah, so.
We wanna be sure it's worded correctly, that that we don't get all things thrown out.
I mean, when I looked at the statutes, the statute tells you exactly how the question has to be worded, except it has blanks for the amounts. What you're asking for, when that new construction, whatever.
I had called about previous questions, and they basically tell me, make sure you call me before you do anything.
So, I think that's right.
It's making sure that they, they.
Still, they can still fix it.
Right, yeah.
That's a worry.
I'll think about it.
So if anybody has questions, they wanna, you know, to send to Scott, it'd be good if you can send them like, by. Tomorrow or something. So that we can kind of send them all at once, if possible. Certainly, if you think of something later, that's fine, too. So anything else?
So Mayor, can I just get clear on the timetable? Are we seeing the question on the fifth?
Yes.
Yes, that's our, that's our intent, Aldo Moore, yes.
First read on the fifth, we have to vote on the nineteenth for it.
Okay.
We have it sooner, we'll get to pack it out sooner, to be honest.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about my own calendar, which I, which, you know, I leave on the twentieth, so. Uh, we should be, we should be fine.
Okay. Um, any staff updates? We have a lot of staff here, if anybody wanna. Give us an update. Okay. Um, the next council meeting then, uh, where we have is read the referendum question, it will be August fifth and August nineteenth, so. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Post to adjourn, second.
All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, staff. You're welcome, thank you, staff.